Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees Meeting. I'm Eric Fong. This is actually my first meeting of the year. I missed last month. I was out of town, so I'm grateful to be here with all of you today. With me in attendance from the board are Vice President Gina Steiner, Marwan Cameron, and Eric Sisney. Stephanie George is actually away on vacation. Before we dive in too far, I want to just ask and give the team here a little bit of grace as we're working through brand-new board software. And so, we're getting through it. We've got some training, but we're live and in color now, so there may be some spots. I want to make sure if folks are navigating need a minute to catch up on where we are with the agenda or with any documentation, just shout out, you need a minute, and we'll work through this for the first time together. So, thank you, everybody, for being here today. And we'll go to Agenda Item Number Two, the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement. Eric?
Inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you. And we'll go to Jason for introductions and welcome.
Good evening and welcome to our February Board Meeting. With us, we have a number of leadership and guests. And from left to right, we have Tammy Jeffries, Administrative Assistant; Dan Baer, Director of -- our Deputy Director and Chief Financial and Operating Officer; Jeannie Allen, Director of Strategy and Communication; Wendy Cowell, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation; Lacretia Robertson, Director of Human Resources and DEI; and then Mike Rose is joining us as the Director of Information Technology and Facilities Management. Absent tonight is Shannon Peterson. And then, to the left of Tammy, we have Administrative Assistant Autumn Alejandrez, who is providing support tonight. Thank you. And then, special guests in the audience are fantastic Mobile Services team that are be giving a presentation from Liz Ochoa. And thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? No? Okay. So, go to Item Five, Public Comment. Per the Public Engagement Board Policy, this time is designated for all residents of Kitsap County to present public comments. The public comment time is set aside for listening to feedback from community without discussion or debate with the speakers. Speakers are asked to follow the Public Comment Board Guidelines, which provides instructions and limitations to public comment. That includes anonymous comments, forwarded emails of others' remarks, comments pertaining to personnel issues, and those that don't align with the library standards for patron conduct library policy. If you wish to speak in person, we actually got one sign up. Please note that up to three minutes is allotted per person. And our speaker is Kathy Kanderly. Kathy, you have three minutes. Thank you for being here today.
Hi. I came a little while ago to talk to you about the room in the Paulsbow Library, and I just got notice that you guys are going to go ahead with that. And I wanted to thank you very much for doing that, for considering our plight and coming to grips with it. I really appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing from you when the room is going to be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Always nice to see satisfied customer, huh? Okay, we'll go to Agenda Item Six, Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Items include the minutes of the January 23 Board Meeting, minutes of the February 16 Board Retreat, payment of the January 2024 bills, and surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for January 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I shall move.
A second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Motion passes. And we will go to Agenda Item Seven, Presentation. Mobile Services. Liz, the floor is yours. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much for having me. It's wonderful to be here. I was going to try to just talk off the cuff, but I tend to get a little emotional when I talk about mobile and our patrons, so I wrote it down, and I'm just going to read it. Just a short bit about who we are and what we do. I'm Liz Ochoa, Adult Services Librarian for Mobile. Karen Moreno and Rudy Traviso are behind me, two of our associates. Danielle Bogard is our third associate. She couldn't be here tonight, but she's just as integral a part of the team as any of us. We've been lucky enough to also have hired a sub-associate, Deb Meyer, who has made our lives so much better. It's a lot easier to go on vacation and know that our patrons are taken care of. We get to pick out and deliver library materials on a monthly basis and take them to patrons who have difficulty getting to a branch on their own. Some patrons are with us just for a few months while they're recovering from a surgery or an illness, and some are with us for years. We have some who have been with Mobile longer than I have. When Mobile was invited to share about what we do and how that translates to our new mission of inspiring curiosity and connection, I was excited. I love talking about Mobile and our patrons, but I also knew it was going to be hard, not because I'd have to dig to find stories that would illustrate how we make connections with our patrons, but because we have so many, I can only pick a few in the few minutes that I have to talk with you. Whenever the mobile team gets together and talks about what we love most about our jobs, the hands-down winner is our patrons. Something I don't think any of us expected when we joined Mobile was how deep of a connection it forges when you spend hours every month, sometimes over the course of years, matching books, music, movies, and more to our patrons' particular tastes. We are thinking constantly about our patrons and what they do and don't like so that we can fill up their library bag with enough to keep them busy for a month, and then after delivery day, we start all over again. We don't just think about this during work hours. Each of us has said that when we go to bookstores for ourselves, we inevitably start making note of titles we see that different patrons would like. In the branch, we'll walk by the holds card in our space and see a title, thinking, "Oh, my patron would love that." And then, we check it in and find out that we were the ones that placed a hold on it the previous week for that patron that we were thinking about. The absolute best is when we're delivering a bag to a patron and they request a title that they want for next month, but we knew them so well that we already have it in their bag for that month. That's like instant gratification. It's pretty amazing when that happens. It kind of feels like a magic trick. Like, you mean this right here? The intimacy of getting to know a patron just by what they read, watch, and listen to is a privilege that not all library staff get to experience, but it's a huge part of what this team does. Danielle shared a story about a patron she never got to meet face-to-face but who liked the exact same kinds of books that she likes. She got to know him just by what she picked out for him over the time that he was with Mobile, and when he passed away, it was a deeper loss than Danielle had expected feeling over someone that she had never physically met. There's a deep connection that happens when you get to know people in this way and when you're constantly thinking about them and what they might want in their next delivery. And I put together just a few slides just to share some of the visual things that we get to experience with our patrons. These are two of our former patrons. See, I'm going to get teary. Janet Weisner was with us for many, many years. I got to deliver to her in her own home. She's the one in the 100-Hour Reader shirt. And then, I got to follow her when she went to an assisted living facility, and I delivered to her until she passed. Kitsap Sun did an article on mobile services and what we do, and when they asked us if we had a patron in mind who would like to be featured, we knew Janet would be like first in line. She was a tireless advocate for us. She was always talking about what we did, and when she went to the assisted living facility, she gathered quite a crew and added to our patron list. She was pretty amazing. And then, Yvonne Hatfield. She's a former KRL employee. She spent 35 years with KRL. She actually worked on one of the bookmobiles. And I got to deliver to her until she passed just a couple months after her 100th birthday. Some of our patrons, we don't get -- especially, this is a COVID effect with assisted living facilities. We don't get to go into the rooms anymore, so there are some patrons we haven't seen in four years, coming up on four years, some that have started with us that we've just never met. Sometimes, the only way we can connect is writing notes to each other. Phone calls aren't always an option, but I just wanted to put a few of the notes up here. We've also become really good at deciphering handwriting because sometimes they're really hard to read. This was to Danielle. "A little bird told me how much time, effort, care, and concern you put into your mobile services selections and deliveries, and I wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart. This book delivery is one of the sweetest things to have happened for me all year." Kay, this family. Mary Jo was a patron that I delivered to. She was a retired children's librarian. She was in memory care, and so, over time, she got to the point where she couldn't read her own books anymore, but she wanted to know what was new in the world of children's literature, so I sent her a bag of kids' books every month. And her daughter started reading them to her, and every time she read to her, they would gather a little group, and it came to be that she would just do a monthly book group and reading of the kids' books that I brought to them every year. And this family is just amazing. They're still in touch with me even though we lost Mary Jo a little over a year ago. She says, "These books were treasures to share during the latest terrible Liberty Shores outbreak. Mom got COVID. I read every single title with her, so grateful." And this is just one of the notes I have from Kay. I have so many in my little cubicle. "Hi, kids. It's nice to be called a kid." I still have -- well, she talks a little bit about books she was keeping for some extra time, but then she says, "Thank you for this wonderful service. Your warm, friendly voices on the phone have cheered me in these strange times. Karen, you are such a gem. Joan loves you. We love you. They should clone you at KRL. Have a wonderful holiday. Know that you are much appreciated." This is a program that I've been lucky enough to do over the last three or four years. I partner with the Bainbridge Children's Librarian, and she reaches out to the schools and has kids write a note to a dear friend, and we get more than enough for our patrons, and we put one in their bags. And I just wanted to show a couple of what those look like. "Dear friend, I hope you're doing okay in COVID. I know it's really hard, but we are all in this together. To make me feel better, I love to think about Disneyland and what is my favorite ride." And then, there are some pictures of Disney princesses and rides. Then Jasper the Cat gets to tell the joke. "What's a nice thing about Switzerland? I don't know, but the flag is a big plus." Wah wah. "Dear friend, my name is Ella. We have a garden and grow veggies. Hope you have a great day. Love your friend Ella." And then, the beautiful horse. "You're my friend, whoever you are. I hope you have a good day and just want to know -- want you to know that some people are out here thinking about you. They really hope you have a good day and hope you stay healthy. By the way, I love horses, so I'll give you a photo of one that is really pretty so it could lighten up your spirit, from your friend Emery." And then, the last note that I picked. This was a note that was to Karen, but I took names off of it because it is a sentiment that we get from all of our patrons, so really, this is just a great indicative note that really encapsulate what Mobile's about. "Thank you for choosing books for me. You bring a part of my life back that I thought was gone and hope for the future when I move." So, that was the end. I just wanted to share a little bit about what Mobile is like, and I really appreciate you giving me time and welcoming us to be a part of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation, Liz. Want to make sure you stay up here just in case anybody has any questions. I think I'm about to cry, too.
So sorry. I should have brought tissues, too.
Yeah. I want to make sure anybody has any opportunity for comments or questions.
Just a comment. I love patron stories. Jason is very intentional on sharing with us how much the library is so much more than just a building full of books, and this really encapsulates just the spirit of the library and the staff and the passion. Just very thankful that you came and shared these stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
How long has the mobile services been? How long have we had it?
That's a really good question. We've actually tried to go back and figure out how many years, but it's been a part of KRL for decades.
Okay.
Yeah.
The gal that was my mentor, there were two in the department, and I think that they were there themselves for 30 years.
Wow.
So, and I've been in this department close to nine or 10. So, it's been around. And Yvonne Hatfield, the 100-year-old gal, she was on one of the bookmobiles back in the day, so, the library. I just am so happy to hear that history and hope that I can continue to advocate for that if it's ever, you know, if there's any kind of threats to it. I loved this and what a difference you make in people's lives. And as Marwan said, it's like the epitome of what KRL stands for in interaction with the public and the patrons, so thank you and thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you so much for giving us a chance. We love talking about our patrons.
My mother was working in the bookmobile back in the early '50s.
Really?
So, I know what you're --
That's amazing. Oh, I'd love to hear more stories about her sometime.
I know Jason is really passionate about mobile services, talks about it all the time, is a huge asset to the library, and really appreciate kind of the sharing of the one-on-one interactions that you have and the meaning behind them. My question for you is, what more can we provide for you to be able to do your job more, better, however else you want to do it, to expand, grow? What do you need?
We've been having this conversation a lot, especially as we're coming up to have a new manager, you know, just as change comes in, you start talking about what can we do to make ourselves like bigger and better. There are only four of us for all of Kitsap County. We have -- we usually hover right around 250 patrons that we deliver to, but we really don't do very much advertising just so we don't hit capacity, but we would love to have -- it's always the answer, more staff and more money, to be able to deliver more. And I'm the first librarian. There wasn't a librarian position in Mobile before. Of course, I became the librarian like right before COVID hit, so that put a damper on being able to go out into facilities and do programming, but we're getting to a point where I can start doing that now. And I just need a little bit more support so that my patrons still get deliveries and I'm still able to go out to all of the different communities. That's one of the best parts. I love that I'm not just tied to one community. I get to see and visit all of Kitsap County.
Yeah, and actually, that brings up another follow-up question. Are there any areas that you go to most frequently and any areas that you feel like there's not a lot of requests, maybe because there's not a lot of awareness? Where do you go most frequently and where have you not really gone so far?
Well, all of our patrons get visited once a month, and we cover all of the different communities throughout Kitsap, but absolutely the most rural areas, like I have Hansville, and I have two people up there. One woman has been -- she hasn't wanted a physical delivery. She just wants something printed out each month, and I just mail it to her, and that's what works for her. But other than that, I have, I think, just one person now in Hansville, and I've tried reaching out to different community groups. There's Hansville Helping Hands, but they just -- it's really, really hard to advertise ourselves to people who are in their own homes and can't leave their own homes very often.
Right.
Assisted living facilities, we have the activities directors, and they're amazing, and they can gather people for us.
Right.
We've always struggled with South Kitsap, North Kitsap, Sebeck. Am I leaving anybody out? It's really hard to get the word out in some of these areas. Indianola, really just the most rural areas.
Right.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in. Obviously, I have talked about mobile because it's one of the first real field trips I took when I got here, and it's not just because I like field trips and I like patrons, but seeing the reception from staff, I mean, from the recipients of mobile services on those visits, I mean, you really do need a box of tissue just on the rides. And just had lunch with this team yesterday to really just kind of celebrate their accomplishments up until this point and just let them know that we collectively are thinking about them. Yeah, I think sometimes it's easy to forget about some of our departments that aren't out at the forefront in that there's only a few of them, like Liz said, and that, you know, the way they're positioned within Sylvan, it's just easy to just walk around them. It's just kind of ensconced and around or inside another department. And so, I just really wanted to thank them for coming out. They're really a shining example of our mission. They really are. Part of our strategy for talking about the strategy on a monthly basis is to trot a lot of our folks here that really sort of imbue what this is all about and what the mission is, and that would include testimonials from patrons, too, because that's how you can best see how the mission lives. So, on behalf of Director Shannon Peterson, Deputy Director Shannon Peterson, who's responsible for overseeing our public services unit, I just really want to thank this unit for constantly inspiring curiosity and connection because they really do it on a daily basis. And I'm excited. I mean, the last thing I'll talk about is, so, the question you posed about what do they need, I think it's obvious that for this service to be truly impactful for the entire county, of which I'll speak to this a little later in my report, more resources are needed. I mean, obviously, if everybody knew about the impact of what Mobile does, we wouldn't be able to sustain the requests that would come in to be able to deliver these services. But I think this is an iteration of essentially the extension of what would have been previous bookmobile and outreach services, right? And so, it's now contained within a special unit that goes out to really get to those people who just don't have the ability to get out. And so, in order for us to truly imagine the full power of this service, we need more everything. And so, scaling that up from four people, leadership currently isn't having conversations about how do we incorporate some of these visions into our strategic plan and how do we create strategies for making sure that we can expand library services to underserved communities? That's a real part of our work this year and in the years to come. And so, I really want to thank Mobile Services Unit for coming out, and hopefully, you'll see them back. Thank you.
We would love to be back.
Yeah, thank you. One more question. Can I do a ride along with you?
Absolutely.
All right. I'd love to.
We let anybody who wants to ride along just contact any of us, and we'll give you a few dates to choose from.
All right. Sounds good.
Eric, maybe you can join me. Tammy's scheduling me for a ride along soon, so maybe we can split up in vans and --
Would love it. Absolutely.
Could I say one more thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to speak to the wonderful communications team, actually, the new chapters that's coming out. One of my patrons, Erica, is a featured story in that, so I just want to make sure that you all take a look at that when you get your copy.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Liz and team.
Thank you.
We will go to Agenda Item 7.02, Board Member Reports. Who would like to go first?
I wasn't here most of the month, so I missed the retreat, I'm afraid.
I missed the board meeting last month, which would have been January, and just wanted to remark on the naming of the MLK Downtown Library, so super excited about that. So, I missed it, but I just wanted to be able to say that. Feels good.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I don't have anything new to report. Yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. No problem. I did attend the board retreat. I also joined Jason and Dan at a meeting, for a meeting in Sylvan Way with Bainbridge Public Library, had a good connection with them. And actually, last Saturday, I took my kids to the MLK Library, and they learned how to play Dungeons and Dragons, so that was pretty cool. We were the first family in, but then, there were probably about another 20 people or so that all dove in last minute. It was pretty overwhelming. The room was packed, and my seven-year-old just fish to water, totally got it, completely understood the skills, rolling the dice and the whole role-playing. And my son, who's four, we were about 45 minutes in, and he said, "Daddy, when are we going to play?" I was like, "Son, we've been playing for 45 minutes. Maybe we're not ready for this," but I really appreciate the chance to meet a lot of other kids who knew and played D and D and meet some other passionate parents as well. It was a really good time, a good chance to connect and learn something new. We'll go to 7.03, Long Range Strategic Planning Committee. I believe Gina is going to give the readout.
I'll go ahead, and Marwan can help cover anything I miss.
Yep.
So, we met, and can you hear me okay? We talked about the organizational goals and how they align with strategic goals and how the library is focusing on assessment of all of its software and working towards creating resilience and strengthening resilience and creating more workplace culture, adding up -- so, we're going to have two staff days this year. I want to just say that we're going to hear more on the collective bargaining agreements more later, and we're reaching the conclusion of negotiations. And as far as the strategic framework, we learned that the key staff here has done 14 presentations, and it seems like a lot of the KRL staff is receiving the one-page summary. They're embracing it and enjoying it. I mean, I think about, I think that's about it. Did I miss anything, Marwan?
I'd just add to the strength of the connection that the staff are making to the strategic plan. Sometimes, it might feel like it's being dictated out, but those things were coming the other way in, so I think that's very powerful, and that was reported to us, so I wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Gina and Marwan. We will go to 7.04, Financial Report. Dan, do you have anything to add to the report?
Thank you, Eric. Good evening. Yes, well, we don't have a lot of data to report on right now since just the first month, but what I'm looking at is to make sure that our expenditures are within budget parameters for a year to date elapsed and that our revenues are coming in, especially property tax revenue. Even though we got, only received about $50,000 in January, we will be ramping up to about a $6 million-plus distribution in April, but we are right on target, so.
That's great. I'm excited to do my part on that.
Thank you. I'll take any questions if the board has any for me.
No questions?
I didn't have any.
Okay. We'll go to 7.05, Library Director's Report. Jason?
Good evening again. So, in January, saw us jump right out of the gate with a big celebration, as Marwan mentioned, the celebration for the downtown Birmerton location and changing our name to the Birmerton Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Branch. So, it was a momentous occasion for all the community as we were joined by MLK patrons, MLK staff, of course, other library staff from around the system, leadership board members, thank you for showing up, and then county dignitaries. So, I'm proud of the work in recognizing and upholding the community's vision to reflect the contributions of the late Dr. Martin Luther King by renaming the downtown Birmerton Library Branch to match the honor that was bestowed upon the city building of the same name, and so, we're really proud that we've been able to realize that. January also kicked off our new strategic framework for the organization, Thrive Ahead. And as Jeannie Allen and myself have begun the tour through locations, we talked in this long-range strategic planning meeting about us being almost all the way through. We've got one more session this Thursday at Paulsbow, but the purpose of that work is to really sort of onboard the organization to the components of the plan, and most notably, for them to be able to. We want for folks who work in every department to see themselves represented in that plan. And so, in having conversations with leadership, we all came to the decision that that was important for us before we started to push that plan out to the community that we need to have full alignment for the entire organization. And really, I think that that's the theme for me this year in terms of what we're doing as an organization, is total alignment, and that's what we're looking for. And so, we will spend the rest of the year with training opportunities, presenting different aspects of the strategic plan, obviously trotting staff and patrons hopefully here to talk about some of how that looks in everyday life, because it's one thing to see the plan on paper and, you know, the other thing I'm excited about, I wanted to talk about, is the fact that we arrived at a plan that I think is so relatable and not, you know, a plan that seems academic. You know, part of my goals when we did this is to have something that really was relatable, plain language, didn't have a lot of, you know, jargon in it, things that folks can really, really gravitate to and see themselves in. So, that work will continue. This is certainly not the end, where this is just the beginning of it, but it's the end of our road shows. And so, we're dedicated to achieving these organizational goals that you talked about in the Strategic and Long Range Planning Report. We've set our organizational goals for the year, and every organizational goal from here on out, not only this year but in years forward, should align to our strategic plan. I think the tendency for organizations to sort of come up with things to do, and I know that they just aren't shot out of a cannon, right? They don't come out of a cipher, but in order for us to really, I think, justify the things that we're doing, the things we will spend time, energy, and money on, they really do need to align to our strategic framework and to our -- need to align to our strategic framework and to our mission. And so we will spend time talking about those things before we implement them and make sure we have full alignment for the organization. And so for us, one of the pillars of Thrive Ahead really is this community engagement and collaboration piece, which you saw on hand, live and in person with Mobile Services. So we believe in really the power of working together, rolling up our sleeves, working with partners, because we can really, you know, double, triple our impact to the community by working with other partners who also serve the community. So much of what happens in a library, because we're open and welcoming to anyone who comes in, we get a lot of needs that we are asked to fulfill, and we do a really good job of fulfilling those, because we're information professionals, but it helps to have relationships with other organizations that we can really count on to help provide, you know, other services that the library staff just isn't trained or equipped to provide. I guess a real good example of that would be, you know, we've got a partnership to house Narcan, for instance, as you know, there's a lot of, and we were having stock conversations before the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee started, about the epidemic of addiction that is plaguing not only this community, all communities throughout the country. And so we see a lot of that come into the library, obviously, because again, we're welcoming, we're a warming center, cooling center, overall just shelter for people. And so it makes sense that you see some of that spill into the library. So for us to be able to work with community partners, to be able to have things like Narcan housed, that's huge, because you don't necessarily have to have the training to administer Narcan, but it is available for those who do have the training or do have the ability and the, they want to show compassion and help their fellow person, their fellow human being. And so that's an example of how that is exemplified. And so the goals are listed in my report. I won't go through them exhaustively, but I will give a couple highlights. And so I want to highlight a few key initiatives that I think move the needle in our vision to really build a collaborative community, because our vision is to build a collaborative community inspired by curiosity and connection, so that all people have the opportunity to grow and thrive. And I don't take that lightly, because the pillar of a really strong community includes a strong library. It includes strong core services. You know, your school should be strong and well-funded, so should your emergency services. You should have great infrastructure that includes a vibrant and thriving library. And so bridging, 2.4 talks about bridging gaps in underserved populations. So a couple of things we're going to do this year, I think, will really have impact. And these are all either partnerships between some of our internal departments with others, or just, you know, single-handedly one department maybe looking to take on a particular project and usher it forward. But most of the projects you'll see in those list of goals are collaborations. There's a lead department, and there are other departments who lend support, but almost everything we do has some linkages to other departments and has some collaborative aspects of them. And so we're going to be trying to pilot, you saw from mobile, or heard from mobile, we're going to try to pilot ebook readers this year for some mobile services patrons. And a couple reasons why we do that. One, one of the things Liz didn't mention is, mobile is a really physical job, in that there's a lot of sort of slepping bags of stuff, right? They get books, movies, you know, audiobooks, and they have to haul those bags sometimes, you know, upstairs, out of the trucks, into facilities, out of facilities. So they're not only dropping off bags, but they're also picking up typically is how it happens. So they'll go to a room, patrons will keep the materials for a month, and then their next visit back, they'll do the swap-out. And so one of the things that might be effective is patrons who have the ability and they want to be able to have an e-reader, you can load, instead of having six books, you could load an e-reader up with six books, and you can lessen the carrying out of materials, and it just makes it more efficient. Also, the other thing is, some patrons, just because of the nature of the work and the nature of the patrons that we see, some of the patrons have a hard time keeping up with the materials, some of the folks are in memory care facilities, so that becomes a burden on, not only in stress for people to look for those materials, including staff, but also us. And we don't want to, you know, be a burden to people to ask them to look for those materials. So having just a single ebook reader would be helpful for that. We are going to launch two book lockers this year, and that is also part of our mission in serving underserved populations. We piloted the one at Paul's Bowl, and I think we've had enough learnings from them that we've developed a couple of relationships that are going to be important to help us. So one is that we have a relationship with Kitsap Transit, and we have entered an agreement to launch a book locker at George's Corner in Kingston, so that's at the Transportation Center. It sees a lot of cars daily for folks who are, you know, transporting throughout the county. And then the other is with the Central Kitsap School District at the Green Mountain Elementary School in Seaback. And so it seems like, of course, a natural partnership. Lots of families are coming to and from that school, dropping off, picking up, so it seems like a central location to be able to house a book locker. And so I think for us, we are excited about the ability to start to extend into communities and extend our reach a little bit, in that we are in a rural community, and so it's going to be important to lean into that piece of it this year. The other thing I'm really excited about is that we are implementing a collaboration between, and Wendy can speak to this more, but we have gotten a grant through Humanities of Washington, it's called the Primetime Family Reading Grant. And so essentially what that is, is a primetime reading helps elementary school families, particularly those who have little or no resources, are impoverished, and suffering from low reading scores, be able to benefit from participation in a family reading program in our libraries. So it's like a six-week sessions that are held in evenings at libraries. They work with schools too, and museums and other organizations, but we're fortunate we've been able to secure this grant, in that families experience storytelling discussions around what they've read by, you know, our librarians in-house, and then they have, they talk about how the literature relates to their own lived experiences, which is important, being able to relate that literature to their own life, really, I think, has an impact on your reading. And then the families read and discuss together, and hopefully in the end, we're improving literacy and critical thinking skills. So right now, we're running this program at the Paul's Bowl location, and the Paul's Bowl team has been off to the races with that, and we hope to expand at least to one more location later at Sylvan, and possibly more, but I'm really excited about this grant and its ability to make impact in bridging underserved populations. Couple more that I think are really important organizationally for where we're going and how it exemplifies what our mission is and our vision, is to, 3.1 talks about creating future-ready and universally accessible spaces. So you can't talk about a library of the future and a library that serves all without talking about accessibility. And this notion that we're welcoming to all, if you're not accessible to all, then you're not. And so a couple of things that we're going to be doing there is, and our guest left, but talking about the expanding the meeting room access at the Paul's Bowl branch. And so we plan to make the Paul's Bowl Library a pilot location for extending meeting room access after the library closes to the community. Particularly, one of the things that we found in, not just with this group, but others, is that meeting room demand is in high, we're in high demand for meeting room spaces, right? And so we can't, we can't possibly meet the needs of all community members for everything they want, but this seems like an easy one to get through, because we already have the technology that, and Paul's Bowl is a perfect location in that the meeting room is separate from the library, it's downstairs, and you're able to access it without having access to the rest of the facility. So our facilities team has been involved. Last year, one of our goals was to make the Sylvan location and the Paul's Bowl location, we recoded the doors, and so that now you can use your ID to badge in, and so that same technology can be used for patrons to sign up and be able to use that meeting room access. And so we're, hopefully, we will be rolling that out in the next couple months, and it will be a pilot at Paul's Bowl, and then hopefully we'll be able to scale that in a couple of the locations. The easiest ones to scale it, obviously, are the branches we own, and the other one we own is Sylvan Way, and we have the technology there. But the implications for this expanding further are pretty good. You know, we'd have to do conversations with other building owners and look at our MOAs and to talk about that, but I think that's going to be important for meeting the needs of the community. The last piece about the creating future-ready universal spaces is, we will be piloting the use of mobile technology within Silverdale branch to create more flexible use of library spaces. I think that's important, because a lot of what happens is, computer use can be high demand in locations, and creating really a future-ready library means having flexible spaces. And so you'll see that on full display once we develop out the Port Orchard floor plan, and that's part of what has gone into that, is to be able to just check out a laptop instead of using a desktop. You're able to save space and create more flexibility for staff and patrons. The last one I'll talk about that I think is really impactful for us is 3.2, Build Transformative Libraries in Birmerton and Port Orchard. We've talked enough about, we haven't talked nearly enough about what's going to happen for the future of our Sylvan Way branch. And so while we've laid the plans for what's going to happen with Port Orchard, and that we're replacing the existing facility that we don't own, and that we will move into, hopefully in 2028, 2029, into a new building, our central library is the Sylvan Way branch, and so it's critical for our operations in that there's a branch there, there's admin there, there's our service teams, and we are running out of space in that building, and we're also, we're going to run out of money trying to fix that building. It's about a 50-year-old building that has, we've put about $2.5 million into just in the last year and a half. And so trying to understand the longevity of that building and its ability to be able to be our central launching point for all of our operations is critical. And so while we're not nearly ready to replace that building now, we have to start thinking and planning now, and see if that's going to become a reality. And, you know, having a central branch that can properly house all of us and be able to do all the things we want, if we're ever going to expand mobile, we're going to need more space, because we can't, even if we had enough money to expand mobile now, we wouldn't have enough space to house the workers and the vehicles to be able to launch mobile out to the community. So all these things are going to be critical. It's going to be critical to have a fully baked plan for that this year, and quite frankly, we need to set ourselves up for what is going to be the sustainable library of the future. We can't wait for others to tell us what that's going to be. I think we know, like, what needs to be done for buildings and what happens in building code, but I think we can reasonably come up with a good plan and talk to other partners about the availability of partners, quite frankly, to go in with us to help transform Sylvan Way either into a new facility or raise it all together and figure out what we can do in that space. So we've got a lot of land, we've got a building that fortunately can still house us, but it's not going to be able to sustain us probably for too much longer. And so those are critical, I think, strategies for us this year. There are a lot of other ones. I don't want to take up the rest of our time tonight talking about them, but I'd like to entertain any questions from the board.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Wonderful report. I just want to say that I really appreciate the focus and the outcomes around extending the library's reach. Really exciting to see your vision come together and, you know, and not waiting to see kind of what the right thing to do is, because what you're doing is ultimately serving the community in the way that they need to be served with mobile services and book lockers and mobile support and so forth. So really appreciate, and I always appreciate, not only just hearing your vision, but the modern approach that you take. We're not catching up. We are, you know, we have a, we have a modern, forward-thinking library. So really appreciate that. I will open it up to the rest of the board members. Questions, comments?
Manchester already has a meeting space that we let people use at night. It's separated from the main library at night. We charge for it, though. It's a minimal amount, but it is income for the friends, but I think we'd be happy to, you know, work with KRL and see what we can do to maybe get, we check out keys to people, but maybe we can do something else, so.
Well, thank you.
With the e-readers, you know, being able to preload it, I think is a great idea. So I assume when that, when the library staff goes out, they would just exchange a new e-reader with new books on there. But as technology advances, and those things could probably be downloaded remotely, just want to make sure we don't lose the touch point between the library and the patrons, because it's so powerful. So, I don't know if we can scale up, but that piece is important.
That is true. And having the conversation with the mobile team, I was not surprised that they already have lots of ideas about how to implement that and keep the personal touch they've always had, including, you know, how to still have the same interactions with patrons, because a lot of it is just, you know, understanding their habits, what they want, but not only that, having the conversations about what they've read. But a big part of it will be the education, how do you use this, right? And so they've already thought about it, not surprisingly, and they're good. Eric, you'll see it when you go on the ride. Yeah. And I invite anybody from the board, if you want to go on a ride, to really see the impact of that unit, let me know, and we can schedule that out.
Thanks, Jason. One of the questions I have is, how do you, how are you going to fold in the assessment in Sylvan Way and over the long term of its, the building's lifespan, and, you know, do the cost-benefit analysis of the money that we've just invested into it? I guess I'm just, what does that look like? How do you do that assessment?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've started, I've started with leadership, particularly Mike, since he is in the director seat at facilities, to just, you know, give me a general report on, first of all, how much money have we put into the building, and what are all the things that basically we would need to replace? He's hit up a couple of different real estate professionals to give us evaluations. It starts with evaluation, like, what is the property worth? Like, if we wanted to do anything, we need the valuation on it. And so there are a couple more data points I want. We were able to get some valuation that I didn't think was complete enough, just because of the professionals who provided it, I didn't think they went deep enough. So that needs to include the land costs, the cost of the actual, if we were going to sell the building, for instance, how much will we get for? Because also we'll have to, we have to take that into consideration if you're talking about what is the replacement value for the property. And so there's a lot of work. And then scheming out, what do we want to see? We've already really started having conversations as leadership, really sort of dream list items of, like, if we had the ability to put a new library here, we've already started to, you know, dream it, like, what would you want? And then, quite frankly, what's needed to be the library of the future, because that's the most important question. What do we need to run a fully functional library of the 21st century? And so we've asked ourselves all those questions first, we just need to go a little deeper. And so, and I've also started to have conversations with community partners who have had experience in this area, getting advice, wanting to know, is anyone else planning to do things building-related? And because a lot of what we talked about earlier is doubling our impact, and you've seen the building projects that have happened, the last three now have been partnerships with other entities. And so a lot of them are conversations out in the community too. So I want to uncover every stone first before making a full decision on what we're going to do with the property. I hope that answers your question. I felt like that was a big word salad for a simple question, but there's a lot of work, and it's really complicated.
I appreciate it, especially looking at Port Orchard and the limited resources and investments that have been made. Keeping it on your radar, just, it's good to have that validated, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, this is, and this is sort of cheesy and new-agey, but I do firmly believe in, like, knowing what you want first, and saying what you want, and saying what your needs are, and starting with that and then going in reverse. Like, we know what we need and what we want, and now let's work backwards and figure out everything we need to do to get there. So part of what I've done is, you know, try to dream up plans for what a facility would look like, what a co-located campus will be with other entities, and we've done some stuff with AI and drew up stuff, just to start to dream, because, you know, things like this start now, but to fully realize it, we may not be there until another 10 years. I hope not, but I think, you know, part of it's just having the conversation first. I think we've been bold enough to put it out and have the conversations and to say what's needed, and I think everybody's excited about the possibilities of something like this happening. But it has to be smart. We aren't going to go in and, you know, leverage the taxpayers for a wad of cash to do something like this, so it's just something that we really need to think carefully about how to do it, how we get this implemented. really need to think carefully about how to do it, how we get this implemented, and how is this going to be sustainable for the future, and deliver what we want it to deliver for the community as a whole. And so more will be reported.
That's great. That's exciting. Due diligence.
Due diligence.
Yeah, looking forward to, looking forward to seeing how that all comes together. That's exciting. So appreciate the report, Jason. Any other questions, comments? I think we're good. All right. Thank you, Jason. We'll go to Old Business 8.01, awards, library policy, second reading. We'll go to Lucretia. Can you give us a little bit of an introduction? And then, Jason, if you want to fill in any blanks after that, you're more than welcome.
Can you hear me?
I did that for dramatic effect. So really quickly, last month, wow, that's already last month, Stephanie mentioned possibility of adding some language to make clear that the monetary awards or the value of the monetary awards would be nominal. So being clear about that. So we took that feedback, but also wanted to make clear in this policy that recipients of any cash awards or cash equivalent awards are required to report that as taxable income. I don't know that we've made that very clear in the past. So we wanted to make sure that the policy reflected that. So you should see an additional two sentences added to the last part of the policy statement that reads, cash and non-tangible awards will be of nominal value. Cash or cash equivalent awards will be reported as taxable income. And that's the change you should see.
I appreciate that. I actually, I actually asked that question, because I'd received something and, at a previous, at a previous company, and they got taxed for it. And I was kind of surprised. But then, it's good to know. It's just good to let people know what's coming. Jason, did you have anything to add?
Nothing more to add. That was thorough. That encapsulates the changes that we discussed.
Great. So do we have, we can discuss following the motion, do we have a motion to approve the awards library policy?
I so move.
Second?
I'll second.
Who do you got, Tammy? Who got in before the buzzer to second? Do we have any discussion? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Lucretia.
You're welcome.
We will go to item nine, new business, item 10, executive session, to discuss the collective bargaining agreement. So we will exit for executive session, come back in about 15 minutes. We're back from our executive session. We will go to agenda item 11, collective bargaining agreement. And I will entertain a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Motion approved unanimously. Congratulations. And I'll pass it over to Jason, if he has any, any comments.
Just a couple of comments to close us out. Thank you for voting on our new collective bargaining agreement. I'm really happy that we've reached an agreement with our union partners, the WPA, and really want to congratulate both sides of the table for lots of hard work over quite a few months. But I think we reached definitely a fair deal for both sides. And these things are often fraught with just a lot of logistics and a lot of time taken away from normal duties. And so the sacrifices that everybody have really undertaken to get this done, I really want to just throw out a word of congratulations to both our internal bargaining teams and the larger WPA organization as a whole. So in the two years I've been here, relationships, I really feel like are part of every situation, every relationship, even though the very nature of collecting bargaining is adversarial, because oftentimes what happens is both sides are coming from different perspectives. But I think within that framework, the relationship piece has to be built in order for us to keep that bridge, you know, connected to both sides, because I firmly believe that we can have and will have the best relationship possible with our bargaining unit partners. And so I'm looking forward to the years ahead with this unit. We all, you know, essentially are here for the same reason. We're serving the public. And so to be able to put those aside in the name of unity to really get to a fair collective bargaining agreement for the library, I just want to congratulate the teams. And specifically in this room, I want to give a shout out to Lucretia Robertson, who has taken on the lead in her department in human resources, particularly our labor relations specialists. I want to throw a shout out to Nancy, because Nancy has been phenomenal. And for those of you who have not met Nancy, she took on a lot of the heavy labor in the beginning in organizing us. She has a great deal of experience, particularly in the federal labor sector. And so we were really fortunate to be able to hire Nancy on with us, to be able to provide a lot of organization for us. She took meticulous notes and just was a wonderful partner in this process. And Dan Baer, who has been a part of this for the last couple of years with me, and sort of negotiating strategy around this and working with Lucretia, and those two have really gotten us to this point. But without all parties involved, we wouldn't be here. And so just really want to, again, thank everybody. And leadership, lastly, because without leadership's perspective on their departments, the implications of various articles for their teams, we wouldn't be here as well. So this takes a lot of collaboration from a lot of different people to get done. So not just the people who are in bargaining all the time. So thank you very much. And Lucretia, I want to turn over to Lucretia. She probably has some final comments.
So the thought just struck me, and I wanted to make sure that I say this in front of this group. The work of negotiation is often emotional and sometimes draining, not because it's, it's bad or that it's hard, but it's because there's people involved, right? We all have ideas of what the right thing is to do. Even on the library side, we may have ideas amongst that team of the way in which that we want to approach things, and then a deep concern for how those conversations are impacting folks. But I want to give credit to Jason for being the, kind of like the barometer, like, okay, it looks like, you know, y'all need a break, take a break. I'm here to hear maybe some ideas that you have, and let's talk through some suggestions. And just a sounding board and an ear and a leader in this regard. So I want to make sure to point out that Jason has been tremendously helpful through this process, tremendously helpful in the way that he stepped back and allowed the team to do the work that needed to be done without micromanaging, and then stepped in where he felt it was necessary. So I want to acknowledge you, Jason, for your leadership in this regard. It's not, it's not a, let's just go sit down and sign a piece of paper. There's a lot of conversation, good conversation, but sometimes it can be a little bit draining. So thank you, Jason.
Thank you. It's great to hear the teamwork and the camaraderie and the support across, across teams. So thank you, thank you very much, and congratulations again. We'll go to agenda item 12, housekeeping. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, March 26. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.